Oh hey, I'm back. And I think it's time for another good old fashioned study session. In today's
Fun Hour.
Study session, we're going to cover all areas of English, including reading, speaking, grammar, vocabulary, and writing. And at the end, we'll even have a listening comprehension quiz. And as always, these study sessions have been designed as a study resource to be used over and over again because you will provide your own materials. So anytime you need a bit of extra help with your studying or just a bit of guidance in how to organize your own study sessions to make them as quick, intuitive, and effective as possible, make sure to come back and check out all of the awesome study session videos within this playlist. But before we begin, don't forget to like and subscribe for more videos just like this to help you along your English learning journey. And maybe send it to a friend who's also working on improving their English. Let's review what we'll cover in today's study session. First, we're going to read for 10 minutes. And while we're reading, we will pick out five words for our vocabulary section. Then in our vocab section, we will review the definitions and maybe even the pronunciation of those vocab words that you picked out. After that, it's time for the listening comprehension quiz. Woohoo! And to wrap it all up, we'll conclude today's study session with our writing practice, which will incorporate grammar, today's vocabulary, and of course, writing. And as usual, we will practice our English speaking throughout the video. Obviously. Now let's discuss what you'll need for today's study session. First, you're going to need something to read. This could be anything from a textbook, newspaper article, something from Ingo. But I highly recommend picking out something that you'll actually enjoy reading. If you need some help finding something fun to read, definitely check out my free reading recommendation guide over on cammiesenglishcorner.com, which has over forty book recommendations in all different genres. So you're guaranteed to find something you love. After picking out what you're going to read, you need somewhere to write all your vocab stuff. Personally, for the vocab section, I like using the Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide. And then for my writing practice, I really enjoy the My 365 Day Writing Journey. Both of these are available on cammiesenglishcorner.com and on Amazon. But you don't have to use these for your vocab and writing practice today. It's totally fine for you to use a tablet, laptop, or even go old fashioned and use a paper journal. Because we're going to have that listening comprehension quiz today, you definitely need to use headphones or try to find a quiet place to study. Next, I recommend using the free weekly study planner to track your progress. It definitely makes studying more enjoyable when you can check off those little boxes and see how well you've done. And finally, because we want to make English studying a positive experience, get yourself some snacks and a cozy place to study. As per usual, today, we're going to kick off our study session with some relaxed reading, just to set the chill vibe for today's study sesh. Today, I'm actually going to be reading a physical book. And this is probably the first physical book that I've read in years because you know me, I'm definitely a Kindle girly. But I had the pleasure of actually meeting the author of this book at a local festival here in Arkansas. And because it's romanticy, of course, I had to buy it. And I like to support local artists and local businesses, authors, what have you. So today's book is called Imperial Knights. It's by Rosalyn B. Wright. And I will go ahead and link this book down below so that you can also go support this local Arkansas author. While we're doing today's 10-minute reading session, make sure that you're also trying to pick out at least five vocabulary words, which we will use next in our vocab section. So make sure you have a snack or at least something good to drink. Today, I'm going for a basic diet Coke. Get your reading material ready and let's begin 10 minutes of reading. Okay. Twenty or ten, 10 minutes of reading is up. I just have to find a bookmark for this because I don't want to like fold the page. So just, just a quick moment. I'll go with this skincare sample packet. I think that'll get the job done. Perfect. So one, this book has massive pages. Usually I can read a lot more quickly, but there's just so much text on each page. And I'm also used to reading my Kindle where I can make the text bigger. So I didn't get very far into my book in the 10 minutes that we had. But in those first few pages, it was quite gruesome. There was a murder and then a demon exorcism. There was a lot of blood. There were nasty things. Someone got shot in the kneecap. Lots of stuff going on. But it was, it was quite the adventure. I'm very excited to continue reading this and to see where more of the fantasy is. And also the romance. I want to know what kind of romance there is. Hello puppy. So tell me, what did you read? Using past tense, can you tell me a little bit about what you read? Now let's hop into our vocabulary section. With the words that you picked out from today's reading material, you're going to study the definitions and the parts of speech for all of the words. So you'll need to Google or use some kind of dictionary to look those up. And then if you have some extra time, you can either use that time to review the definitions and words, or you can go ahead and practice the pronunciation of those words. Usually I like to write down my answers either in my physical copy of the Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide, or I use my tablet and fill it out on the ebook version of the study guide. But today, for obvious reasons, I'm actually going to type the words and definitions into my Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide on my computer. So you honestly have so many options for studying your vocabulary. Do you need to use the Five by Five Vocabulary Study Guide? No, you can do the same method on your computer or in some kind of notebook. But I just like the way that it's organized in the ebook version or in the physical copy. Are you ready with your five or more words? Let's begin 10 minutes of vocab. Okay. 10 minutes of vocab is up. Let me make sure I save this clip because sometimes I do forget to save it. And that is never ideal. And that is never ideal. Because then I just have to redo the entire thing. And no one wants to do that. That's my fun little behind the scenes. Wait, oh, okay. Thought I lost it again. Today, my words were barbarity, gaunt, quaternary, exalt, and exorcise. So all these words are quite negative, except quaternary. Quaternary isn't really a negative word. And I actually had kind of a difficult time understanding that word. I had never read it before. This was the first time I've ever come across that word. And the first issue that I had was that I accidentally spelled it wrong. So then when I was looking up the definition, I couldn't find the correct definition. And I thought that Google was leading me astray to a different word that did not have an R in it. Because I thought that it was quaternary. But no, it's quaternary. So that one, I believe, is neutral, not negative or positive. But all the other ones are definitely a good indicator of how negative and barbaric the first few pages were of the book that I was reading. And I wanted to take a look at this last word, exorcise. So exercise looks and sounds very similar to exercise, like running, jumping, playing sports, all those things. But man, are they different? So when it's exercise with an O, that's when you're trying to take a demon or evil spirit out of a person or thing. Um, while exercise with that E in it is obviously working out, fitness, that kind of thing. So definitely do not want to get those words mixed up. You don't go to the park to exorcise or go to the gym to exorcise. While you also wouldn't go to a haunted house to exercise and get your fitness on. So what words did you study today? And what were their definitions? Go ahead and read them all out loud for some extra pronunciation practice. So now it's time for a little catch-up story time about where I've been for the past few months. And at the end of it, we're going to do a listening comprehension quiz. In the quiz, you won't only be tested on the contents of what I will talk about. You're also going to be quizzed on the vocabulary that I use, including individual words and idioms. And you'll also be tested on some grammar points. So make sure that you're listening very, very carefully to the story that I'm about to tell you. Are you ready? Let's go. So on July 2nd, I flew from Little Rock, Arkansas, all the way to Santa Rosa, California, to be an English teacher at a summer camp for Finnish teenagers. I first worked for this camp last summer, 2023, and it was just such a fun and amazing experience. So I couldn't turn it down when they asked me to return for a second year. This year, we were fully booked with 12 students, 10 girls and two boys. And all of them had really good English, which honestly made my life as their teacher so much easier. For this summer camp, a lot of the students stay with host families to increase their English exposure. And it also gives them a really good way to experience English culture through the eyes of normal American families. So they got to do a lot of different activities with their host parents, like go to different family gatherings with them. They also took them to the movies or took them to their favorite stores and restaurants. And it was a really nice way for the kids to have individualized experiences outside of just what we were doing in the classroom and as a group. While I stayed at a hotel last year, this year, I also had the opportunity to stay with an amazing host mom and her super cute little dog. And it was so nice being with the dog. Because last year, obviously, being at a hotel, there were no animals. And I really missed my own puppies. So her dog was a nice, I guess, temporary replacement for my own sweet dogs that stayed back home in Arkansas. Before I taught at this summer camp last year, I had actually never really heard of Santa Rosa, California. But it really is quite an amazing city. It's full of huge vineyards. And there are lots of mountains and parks. And it's a really convenient location to go to all different national parks. And it's relatively close to San Francisco as well. So because of that location, we were able to take the kids to so many fun places. Like, we had a day in San Francisco, going to all the different little tourist attractions there. We took them to a few different lakes. We went to the beach a few times. We went to the Redwood Forest. Like, there were just so many great opportunities and fun places for us to take the kids. But to wrap up the summer camp experience, we all flew down to Los Angeles. And we went to Hollywood, Disneyland, and Universal Studios. So I've been to Disneyland a handful of times. And some people may get bored of it after their second or third time. But to me, it is still so magical. And I really love taking people to Disneyland when it's their first time so that I can show them all the different amazing things and introduce them to the tasty foods there, like the famous smoked turkey leg, the churros, and my ultimate favorite, the pineapple Dole Whip floats. And my boss and I did kind of a sneaky thing. Because it was the summer camp's 10-year anniversary, we got little happy birthday pins while we were at Disneyland, and we wore those around. And when you have a birthday pin at Disneyland, the staff is extra friendly to you. Everyone told us happy birthday. And that was kind of funny, that even though it wasn't our birthday, it was the company's birthday, we still got a little bit of extra special treatment. Universal Studios was also quite fun. But I will admit, I prefer Disneyland a little bit more because of the magical aspect. But I was super stoked to go to the Wizarding World in Universal Studios because the last time I went there, 18 years ago, it hadn't opened yet. So it was really cool to walk around that area and go on the rides. And I finally got to try the famous butter beer. But it, I'll be honest, it wasn't as good as I had hoped. But it was still quite tasty. Just not really what I expected. And unfortunately, while we were at Universal Studios, all of us experienced a ride breaking down, which was really weird. So when I was on the Harry Potter ride, it shut down for like five minutes. And it was kind of scary because we were in a pitch black room and just stuck. So that was a bit of a bummer. We are stuck in the ride. But at the end of our day in Universal Studios, I had a really fun experience getting fitted for my own wand. And I feel like mine is pretty cool. I like it a lot. And we got to watch this amazing light show that they had displayed on the Hogwarts Castle. So that was a pretty magical experience. Then the week that I returned from California ended up being pretty chaotic because my original flights got canceled due to that crazy Microsoft outage. So I had to stay an extra day in California, which kind of threw off all my other plans. If I had an overnight flight to get home, I had to fly to a different state, which was two and a half hours away. So my poor husband had to drive five hours that day to come and pick me up. And then two days later, I ended up having my final tattoo appointment. And I was able to finish up my half-sleeve tattoo, which was really fun. But man, I was still exhausted after my crazy travel adventures. Um, but that was still a good, albeit painful, experience. And finally, to address the elephant in the room, I did not break or injure my wrist. Um, I actually got tendonitis due to using a non-ergonomic mouse for the past five years that I've been working from home. So I'm not quite sure how long I'll have to wear this brace. But yeah, it's not very fun. I can't really move my thumb. But I did get a new fancy ergonomic mouse that will hopefully alleviate my pain and make it so I don't get tendonitis again and have to get stuck with this big stupid wrist brace.
After hearing the question, you will have 10 seconds to answer. But feel free to pause if you need some more time. Question one. Where were the summer camp students from? Is it A, USA? B, China? C, Finland? Or D, Sweden? The answer is C, Finland. Have you ever been to Finland before? Question two. What does the idiom "turn something down" mean? Is it A, fold something? B, refuse something? C, accept something? Or D, move in a different direction? The answer is B, refuse something. Question three. How many girls and boys attended the summer camp? Is it A, five girls and five boys? B, 12 girls and 12 boys? C, two girls and 10 boys? Or D, 10 girls and two boys? The answer is D, 10 girls and two boys. But don't worry, the boys were best friends. So they still had a great time. Question four. What does the idiom "through the eyes of" mean? Is it A, to consider or experience something from the perspective of another person? B, to get new glasses that help you see better? C, to borrow someone else's glasses? Or D, to read someone's mind to understand their thoughts? The answer is A, to consider or experience something from the perspective of another person. Question five. What does the phrasal verb "wrap up" mean in this context? Is it A, put pretty paper on a present? B, finish something? C, start something? D, do a song and dance? The answer is B, finish something. Question six. What does the idiom "a handful of times" mean? Is it A, the amount of clocks you can fit in your hand? B, around 10 minutes? C, having occurred on many occasions? Or D, having occurred on several occasions, but not many? The answer is D, having occurred on several occasions, but not many. Question seven. What tense is used in this sentence? All of us experienced a ride breaking down. Is it A, past? B, present? C, past continuous? Or D, present continuous? The answer is A, past tense. Question eight. What does the phrasal verb "through off" mean in this context? Just a side note, this is written in past tense. The present tense version of this phrasal verb is "throw off." Is it A, to toss something in a random direction? B, to remove an item of clothing quickly? C, to launch someone into the air? Or D, to disrupt or ruin plans or progress? The answer is D, to disrupt or ruin plans or progress. Question nine. What is the definition of "albeit"? Is it A, being able to do something? B, an expression of agreement or approval? C, although or even though? Or D, a conjunction that means because of? The answer is C, although or even though. And let's quickly look at that pronunciation of "albeit" again. It is three syllables. Al, bi, it. Albeit. It's not able it or albeet. Albeit. Question 10. What does the idiom "the elephant in the room" mean? Is it A, a significant issue that everyone is aware of but avoids discussing? B, a very large and obvious decoration in a room? C, a situation where everyone is waiting for a big surprise? Or D, a well-known problem that has already been solved? The answer is A, a significant issue that everyone is aware of but avoids discussing. As you can see, this idiom has nothing to do with actual elephants. Question 11. What is the definition of ergonomic? Is it A, a term describing products made for luxury and style? B, designed to provide comfort and efficiency for the user's work environment? C, a style of design focused on aesthetic appeal rather than functionality? Or D, a design principle aimed at improving comfort and efficiency in everyday objects? The answer is B, designed to provide comfort and efficiency in the user's work environment. However, D is quite similar. The only difference is B emphasizes the work experience, while D
while D is about the everyday items that you use. But one could argue that if you work most days, then the stuff you use at work is kind of an everyday object. Question 12: From the phrase, "for the past five years that I've been working from home", when can you assume I started to work from home? Is it A, five years before I moved to Arkansas? B, five years after I moved to Arkansas? C, five years ago? Or D, sometime in the past? It doesn't matter when. The answer is C, five years ago. I started working from home in 2019. And as of recording this, it is 2024. I've only lived in Arkansas for one year, so it's definitely not B. Question 13: What does the word "alleviate" mean? Is it A, to completely eliminate a problem or issue? B, to reduce or ease the severity of something? C, to make a situation more complicated? Or D, to make something more intense or severe? The answer is B, to reduce or ease the severity of something. And finally, question 14: What did the phrase "outside of what we were doing in the classroom" imply? Is it A, activities that took place outside, like at a park? B, classroom activities? C, additional activities that took place at any location that was not the classroom? Or D, activities that only took place in the classroom because it was an educational camp? The answer is C, additional activities that took place at any location that was not the classroom. Great job on the listening quiz. How'd you do? Now to wrap everything up, it's time for our writing challenge. In the comments section, using past tense, write about what you did in July and/or August. And make sure that you try to incorporate at least one vocabulary word that you studied in today's vocab section. Now, if you had some dark and creepy vocabulary words, like I did, you might have to get a little bit creative with how you incorporate them into your writing. Honestly, I would have to get really creative with trying to incorporate exercise or barbarity or gaunt into my cute story about teaching at summer camp. So good luck to you. And as always, I'll go through and provide free personalized feedback and corrections to everybody who participates in today's writing challenge. If you found today's video helpful, definitely check out my other study session videos in this playlist right over here. And I also think that you'll really enjoy this video right here. So happy studying, and I'll see you later.